Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular December Northborough School Committee meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, December 6th, 2017. It's just past the hour of 7:00 AM and I call the Northborough School Committee into session. And the first item on our agenda is the Action on Minutes, Action on the Open Meeting Minutes from October 30th. November meeting, actually, but it was on October 30th.
My motion that we accept the open meeting minutes on October 30th.
Thank you.
Second.
Any comments or discussions? My only comment, I don't know how my fellow committee members feel. I feel like Jennifer, is her last name Kenny?
Yes, and there's two of them. There's Jennifer McCaslin and Jennifer Kenny.
I feel like she should get some recognition for coming up and helping to present, even if she wasn't the speaker. So it's not really going to change any of the motions and votes that were made that evening. But if that slight adjustment could be made to recognize Ms. Kenny as being present and helping to present.
You can certainly add a statement to the minutes.
Yeah, if we could just add that statement.
I amend my motion to include that.
Thank you.
And I will second with amendment.
Fantastic. Any other comments?
So, Madam Chair, we'll just make that addition and I'll bring it back next month just so you can see that the addition is made since the minutes have already been voted and approved. Does that work?
I believe it does. We just need to take a vote in our favor. Yes, great, thank you.
Thank you.
On the agenda, is the, I actually, we'll go with the, we'll keep the agenda in line. I know that Rhoda is anxious to present. But we, Rhoda, you okay keeping, are you okay being next, going after Peaslee or would you?
Of course.
Okay, all right, well then we will move into Peaslee School Improvement Plan and PTO presentation. We'll go with PTO presentation first.
Which one like first?
Are the members ready?
I'm usually on the PTO list.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
So while Michelle finishes setting that up, I'd like to introduce Nancy Dennehy and Erin Tagliafari. They are the co-chairs of the PTO. We have some great highlights for this year to share with you.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for having us. So first, I kind of want to start off with the PTO board is made up of eight members, five parent volunteers and three faculty members. We meet monthly to go over budget and upcoming events. Myself and Erin are the co-chairs. We have Lindsay Musa and Gretchen Muffley are the communication chairs. Carolyn Blanchett is the treasurer, Dr. Barnhart, as well as two teacher reps, Andy Donae and Carrie Toit. So that is our board. We work pretty, very well together, having our meetings and kind of going through all the events that we have. Our total budget for the year, this year, is $18,000, which is up on the screen. As of the end of November, we've spent about $6,000 of that 18. There are four major areas of the budget, fundraising, enrichments, school spirit and school support. Fundraising, which is our first, our main one here, our goal for this year was $17,000. We have currently raised about $10,000 as of the end of November, so we're doing really well with our fundraising goal. Our main fundraiser is the annual kids fair. This year it was held Friday evening, November 16th. We had a very successful night. We raised about $7,700 and it's only a two and a half hour event, so we did really well. A new item that we added this year is that we actually put the silent auction online. And by doing that, we increased what we raised from silent auction by almost $1,000. So we'll definitely continue to do that. We also did a fun run last May where the students voted on what they wanted to raise money for, and they decided on a new addition to the playground. We got a tri-totter. The kids raised $5,000 for the tri-totter and it was installed this fall. We also do some additional small fundraisers during the year. We have our script cards during the holidays. We also did a new square one art fundraiser this year. The artwork is scheduled to arrive right before winter break. We also do box tops. We've been doing monthly contests to get the kids excited about collecting them. We're registered on Amazon Smile. We had our first restaurant night last week, which was at Casa Ferrata in Northborough. And then we also have the textile bins outside of the school and we accept direct donations since we are a registered nonprofit, so it's all tax deductible for anyone who wants to donate to us. Our next area is our enrichment program. Our enrichment program is led by Sue Bashis, who's a parent volunteer. Sue has pretty much taken over all of that. She manages the entire process. We currently have 16 programs scheduled for this year. Our budget this year was $7,000, which was a little bit of an increase. Last year it was about $6,000. Some highlights of the enrichment program are a visit from historical perspectives this year. We had Sally Ride come in. We also have visits from Museum of Science, Reading is Magic. Dr. Seuss is coming in March to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. That's a new program for us this year. And we also have our pumpernickel puppets that come in June for kindergarten and first grade, and we also invite the incoming kindergarten class to that performance. Our next area is general support. So last year, we actually had some additional funds in the budget, so we were able to purchase a 3D printer for Peaslee so that we didn't have to share with all the other schools. We also purchased some indoor recess carts and some additional playground equipment, basically jumping, jump ropes and that type of stuff. Our grant budget this year is $3,000. We've spent about $1,000 to date. We purchased books for each classroom for the Kindness Rocks Project, some flexible seating, items for music. We also provide classroom supplies for the teachers, library support, and we cover bus costs for field trips. We also do a number of teacher appreciation events during the year, welcome back, breakfast, lunch during conferences, and end of year lunch. We also have a number of spirit events. Last year, we did a volunteer event Crayons to Crayons, as well as a movie night at the Strand Theater in Clinton. This year, the first week of school, we had a welcome back night where we had the local band hit the bus, perform outside, and we had an ice cream truck visit from Goldman's come to the school. Earlier this year, we raised about $1,500 in Amazon gift cards to send to Moore Elementary School in Houston to help with flood recovery efforts as well. We also do monthly spirit days where we collect food donations for the Northborough Food Pantry as well. Also, coming up in January, we're doing a Peaslee night at the Worcester Railers hockey game, where we'll also have an opportunity at the end of the game for the group to get on the ice and take a picture. So we're excited about that. And then our new this year, so this was a big deal for us, we are having the Harlem Wizards basketball team come to Northborough. They're going to be playing at Algonquin High School on April 12th. This is going, this not only to be a fundraiser, but also a community event for all of Northborough and anyone else who wants to come. We're also going to be reaching out to a number of you, as well as the Peaslee community, because we need to make up a local Northborough team to play against the Wizards. So you'll be hearing a lot about this in the coming weeks and the coming months as we, you know, reach out to everyone. And that is pretty much it. I just want to thank everyone for their continued support.
Thank you. I think maybe Mrs. Carr can bring that message back to Mrs. Callahan about that need for basketball players. I hear she might have a little experience in that area, certainly a lot more than myself. I have to say what you are very, a lot, this is amazing, everything that you do. Thank you so much for giving of your time and leading such a great group that does so much for your school community.
Thank you.
I'll hand out to my fellow committee members. I feel the same sentiments. Thank you for all that you do. You contribute so much to the school. We really do appreciate all the hard work you put in.
Thank you.
Nancy and Erin, I'd love to thank you for everything that you've done, and please take it back to all your membership because I think you're doing a fabulous job. I mean, it helps us, as I say every year, as we get into the budget season, knowing, you know, that, you know, you're fundraising, you're trying to get $17,000, and to date you have $10,000. We're only like three months into school.
Yes.
That is absolutely fabulous. I mean, some of the things that we would have is, you know, maybe a capital improvement or even as a line item would be playground equipment that is needed, and you're also doing that. And even knowing that the kids fair was only two and a half hours.
Yeah.
I can't believe it. Unbelievable. I had one question on the Brain Injury Association that you had for enrichments. Because at the high school, we're doing, you know, impact study on that, and I, as a regional member being there saying, oh, it's nice that we're doing this at the high school, but, you know, we got to get also back down to the lower grades and make parents wear kids. And so I just wanted to know, what was that brain injury association? What, was that just for the faculty?
No, so we actually have not had it yet.
Right.
It was rescheduled. Yeah, so.
December 20th.
December 20th, okay. Yep, and it's actually Lori Perkins, our nurse at Peaslee, is the one who brought it into the school. So we haven't had it yet, so we don't know exactly what the.
But it is for students.
Students.
Oh, it is for students.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Not sure if it's everybody. No, that is. That's really good. I mean, because, you know, you start here and, you know, you go up to the regional level and then the high school, and it's sometimes, as Christine knows, you know, and all the board members, it's, it's nice when we hear the connection between the K-8s and the high schools. So, and what, the little bit that you're doing in this is wonderful, it really is. And on your general support, teacher appreciation, because teachers put so much money of their own into the supplies that they need.
Yes, we try to tell them to ask us for money, yes.
And it's wonderful that you support them in that endeavor and then you also thank them throughout the year on what they have. And then one last question I have was on your school spirit. You said you're purchasing books for the Kindness Rocks, and I know that we heard that, I think, at a previous meeting. I just wanted to know, you know, where the rocks are going to be placed at Peaslee and when, is it an end of the year thing or?
So they're actually already out, right out front at Parent Pickup, right out front. You can see the rocks that are out there. And I think that was on Twitter, I think there was some sort of.
I think I might have a picture. Might have a picture? Okay, so is that at the front, so if I just drive by when schools are in session?
You'll be able to see it right there.
Right in front? It's a relatively small area right now, and we're hoping to add to it, you know, over, over time. That's nice, that really is.
Yeah, and the kids get very excited when they see their rock out there, so.
to present to you tonight the Peaslee Elementary School School Improvement Plan.
Oh, I bet they do. They really do. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So again, like everything that we do at school, nothing happens without a committee behind it, and in this case, it's our school council. And we have one parent, Mrs. Burns. We have two teachers, Melissa Farrell, Ariella Greenspan. Mrs. Greenspan is in the audience this evening. And we also have a community representative, we've spoken with you before, about Geraldine LaSordo, who works for Aspen Airagels locally, and they have been great supporters of Peaslee. And as I mentioned, everything at school happens with a great deal of support from all of the members of our school community, our faculty and staff, so we do want to thank everyone at Peaslee for their support for this. We also, again, appreciate having the opportunity to present to you this evening. So the first thing that we've included in our plan is the vision statement for Peaslee School, and our focus really is on the fact that all of our members are learners. So whether it is children or adults, we are all lifelong learners and we focus on learning in our community and focus on making sure that we all have connections and that we all feel like we belong to this learning community. Our mission statement is also part of the plan, and we look to provide differentiated opportunities for all of our students. We encourage them to become reflective learners so that they own their own learning and that they think about what they're learning and how they learn best. And then we also focus on teaching skills and knowledge that will serve them well in the future. We've also talked in the past about one of the main focus areas for previous plans, and that was our PAWS program, which stands for being positive, be aware, be willing, be safe. And we started several years ago, very explicitly teaching the expectations to students and providing opportunities for them to practice what these things look like in school. And you can see our pictures here show the kindergarten class showing me what a nice quiet line they could make in the hallway so that they don't disturb other learners as they're moving through the halls, and then some students who are working together cooperatively, because we feel that that's very important as part of a positive school community, to come in with that attitude that I'm coming here to learn, I'm going to have a great day, I'm going to help, I'm going to work hard, I'll persevere even when things get tough. And I'm aware of my surroundings, the people around me, how my words and actions affect the people around me, and also safety. So we have the safety of, you know, you keep your hands, feet and objects to yourself, you walk when you go through the halls, but also that awareness of making sure that the doors are locked and we're not letting people into the building without knowing who they are. So we feel like this has become a real integral part of our school community. So, moving quickly along into our goals, the first goal is that we will engage in the systematic collection and collaborative analysis of data to inform and enhance instruction. And we wanted to show how this particular goal aligns with the strategic plan that we have in the district. And we looked at indicators in the areas of curriculum, student support and technology. And you can see that this theme is woven through where we're looking to make sure that we provide students with those 21st century skills, that we expand professional development opportunities so that we can support students as we are analyzing data and using that to inform instructional decisions. We want to make sure that we are aligning our assessments with rigorous curriculum standards for the 21st century. We are looking at building a dynamic learning environment where children are up and moving and their learning moves with them. We're thinking about providing training for staff so that we can provide effective instruction and services for all of our students. And then looking at how do we use technology to enhance our instruction. I know we've mentioned this in the past, we don't want to use technology just to be able to say, oh, we use technology, but how do we use technology to make learning meaningful for students? So that, those are the areas from the strategic plan that our goal is focused on. And then we looked at the actionable processes that would support us achieving this goal. So first, we are looking at having teachers collaborate with each other and with our reading and math coordinators to make sure that we are collecting appropriate data and analyzing that data in a very systematic way so that when we collect our data, we have a purpose for that data, and we're using it to guide our decisions about how we make instructional groups, how we determine which types of instructional practices are appropriate for different groups, whether we're looking at students who maybe need some extra support or students who need some extra challenge. So we're looking at those targeted interventions for students across that, that whole sequence of learners. And then we're also looking at analyzing our assessments and calibrating the scores of assessments so that we can create exemplars so that when we have a new member of a team, they know how we're scoring so that the scoring is aligned across a grade level within our school, but also across the district. But also so that we can teach students what we're looking for. So if you can show students a model of an exemplar and help them analyze what a good piece of writing looks like, or what a good piece of math assessment looks like, then they're better able to translate into their work that they produce. So that's where we came up with those two processes. Another item that we're planning to work on is having our teachers meet in weekly co-planning and co-teaching sessions so that as classroom teachers and student support staff, reading teachers, math teachers, they're working together to make sure that we're supporting all students and they're planning so that what a child might be working on in the general education classroom is reinforced if they leave the classroom for services in another area, so that everything's integrated and woven together for students so that they're not doing things in isolation. But everything has meaning and everything translates right back to that general education classroom. We have teachers who are very excited about exploring more opportunities for co-teaching with their colleagues. And again, we are also looking at using the data that we collect from our progress monitoring to create instructional groups, and we're looking at using data to create groups of students who maybe need to reinforce the same skill or expand the same skill, students who maybe have a similar interest, or students have a particular learning style that's best met in a specific way. And then we would revisit that periodically each time we do progress monitoring so that the groups become flexible, so that as children's needs change, those groups change and the targeted instruction changes. So, we are also, as I said, collecting that, I think I skipped ahead to this slide, but this would be an example of how we collect our data so that we have our benchmark assessment data all in one place for a particular classroom in a grade. And then we also have the progress monitoring data where we're highlighting students' progress through a particular standard or a skill on a regular basis. So we might do a quick assessment once a week so that we know exactly where they are in the process, and then we can catch children if they're starting to falter or fall behind, or if they're accelerating, we can move them along where they need to be. So again, we are looking at accelerating and remediating students. We're looking at having staff meet together to draw conclusions and make adjustments to our instructions. So we don't necessarily want to go lockstep with a particular approach, but we want to make sure that we're personalizing the instruction so that we're, we're really looking at what children need so that we're making really good decisions about, about how students learn and what they need to learn. And then we're looking at the MCAS data, because we know that that is a, it does give us information about our students' learning and about our curriculum, and we're looking at how can we analyze MCAS data. I think I've talked to you before about some of the initial efforts that we've made to really share data K through 5, analyze how are we doing, where are our needs, what are we doing well on, what are the things that we need to maybe do some more focus on. So we've already made some decisions that way. I feel like this year, we're making more progress. We've already had two faculty meetings that were devoted to MCAS data. In the first one, we worked with fifth grade teachers to look at the overall performance in ELA, overall 3, 4 and 5 together, and then each grade 4 and 5. And then we looked at overall performance in math and again, 5th grade science. Most recently, this Monday, we had all of our teachers K through 5, and they got into three groups. Each group looked at a report that breaks down the MCAS questions and what those questions are looking for specifically according to standards. And again, we looked at what are the things for us to celebrate? I know in the past that we have identified drawing inferences from what we read as something that we really need to work on, and it kept coming up year after year. And I have to say, this year, that came up as a celebration. We got there where we want to be with, with making inferences. And then we also made a list of things that we want to keep an eye on, our concerns. One of them that we were able to identify is point of view. And I'll talk about that a little bit later when we talk about our second goal, but when you're reading, can you take a character's point of view? Can you compare the point of view of different characters? And can you think about what the author's point of view is in what you read? So we're really making very timely use of that MCAS data and honing in on some very specific areas that we want to work on. So, our second goal is that Peaslee School educators will emphasize social and emotional learning, which we abbreviate as SEL, to foster a culture of ownership for learning, resilience and inclusiveness. And through the implementation of a school-wide SEL curriculum, students will develop a repertoire of social skills and self-regulation strategies. Speaking of being timely, this month's edition of Educational Leadership, which is a professional journal that many of us read, each month it has a theme. This month's theme is mental health in schools. I feel like we are on the cutting edge of this kind of work. So again, we made sure that what we're working on aligns very closely with the strategic plan for the district, and really this focuses on that student support area of making sure that we are meeting the needs of the diverse learners who are in front of us. As Alana mentioned last month, we are noticing a number of students who come to school who have diagnoses of conditions such as anxiety, and sometimes those things interfere with children's ability to learn and focus on school. So we want to make sure that we're offering appropriate supports to help them, the active And I think this, again, speaks to the work that we've done in previous plans with the positive behavior and the PAWS program. So now we're taking that and building on that. So our first actionable process that we're looking at is that we want to develop a committee of teachers, and they're actually already talking about this and planning it, so that we could take all of the different programs that we're using to build that social emotional learning, like Zones of Regulation, like the Superflex Characters, Social Detective, the Behavior Code, Second Step. We want to take pieces of all of those things and weave them into a proactive unit so that we're not just teaching these lessons to children who have an identified difficulty, but we're being proactive and front-loading this so that we teach all of our students these strategies. What do you do when something gets difficult? What do you do when things aren't going your way? What do you do when you get up in the morning and your favorite cereal is gone and the blue shirt that you wanted to wear to school today is in the wash and mom says, no, you can't take it out of the laundry? So how do you cope with that? And let's be proactive about teaching children those kinds of things. The picture that I used here was the bucket filling classroom because that's something we use in our lower, lower grade levels to make sure that we are helping children understand how do you fill someone's bucket by being positive and giving them positive feedback? How do you fill your own bucket with your positive self-talk? And how do other people fill your bucket? And then I said that we would front-load this, but we also want to look at revisiting these lessons periodically throughout the year so that we're always spiraling back and making sure that children are always having those skills that they need and keeping these things in mind. So once we develop this curriculum and we pilot it, then we want to evaluate the pilot, make revisions that we need to make, and then share this throughout K through 5 and make sure that this becomes a school-wide unit, just as we've done with the positive behavior. So we want to make sure that we are bringing this into all classrooms. And really, one of our expectations is that as we front-load this in our lower grade levels, then the need to spend as much time on this will become slightly smaller in the upper grade levels because that common language, that vocabulary and those strategies will come with the children as they hit the, we call it the upper wing where the big kids are. So this was just an example. The picture that I used here was the bucket filling classroom, because that's something we use in our lower grade levels, to make sure that we are helping children understand, how do you fill someone's bucket by being positive and giving them positive feedback? How do you fill your own bucket with your positive self-talk? And how do other people fill your bucket? And then I said that we would front-load this, but we also want to look at revisiting these lessons periodically throughout the year, so that we're always spiraling back and making sure that children are always having those skills that they need and keeping these things in mind. So, once we develop this curriculum and we pilot it, then we want to evaluate the pilot, make revisions that we need to make, and then share this throughout K through five, and make sure that this becomes a school-wide unit, just as we've done with the positive behavior. So we want to make sure that we are bringing this into all classrooms. And really, one of our expectations is that as we front-load this in our lower grade levels, then the need to spend as much time on this will become slightly smaller in the upper grade levels, because that common language, that vocabulary, and those strategies will come with the children as they hit the, we call it the upper wing where the big kids are. So this was just an example, two children explaining the Superflex. I don't know if you remember those with the characters like Mean Gene and Glass Man, and then Superflex is that flexible person who can go with the flow. Excuse me. So then, here's the picture of our rock garden in process, so that's not quite all of the rocks, that was the children putting it together. So each year, we want to identify a school-wide theme that would be focused on social-emotional learning. For this year, our theme is kindness, and as you reminded us, the PTO has Kind Enough to provide a copy of a book that focuses on kindness and how even very young children can make a contribution to their local and global community. So we used that story as a kickoff event. We had a couple of teachers who stayed late a couple of afternoons and put base coats on the rocks. Then all of the children were given their rocks, and they chose their messages to put on, and they were beautiful, you know, just things about peace and kindness and love. They really talked about and planned what they wanted to put in their rocks. And then the fourth graders collected all of the rocks, and they were able to place them in the garden, so that we could have a good start with that. And again, we want to choose a theme each year, so that we can build upon this and use this as kind of our base. So, another area that we want to focus on is establishing a committee to really explore opportunities to engage the students, the staff, and the families in health and wellness types of programs. So, we've been reading a lot about mindfulness, and yoga, and fitness, and nutrition, and relaxation. We want to make sure that we make some really good decisions about items that are supported by research, that are shown to be effective, and that work. Then we want to take the research that we develop, identify some types of programs and activities to bring into the school, and then implement those on a regular basis, so that we can support that idea of holistic wellness for all of our families and all of our staff. And then, we also want to continue the work that we have done with bullying and cyberbullying. Again, the PTO at Peaslee had been very generous several years ago. They purchased the Second Step program for every grade level, and we use that consistently in all of our classrooms and at all of our grade levels, so that we are teaching children problem-solving, and it's called a Violence Prevention Program, and it talks about having empathy and how to include children. If you see somebody who's by themselves, how could you reach out and invite them to play? Or if you're the child who wants to join a group and play, how do you approach a group and join in appropriately? And so we want to build on that, and again, like I mentioned, we want to take pieces of that and incorporate it into a very much front-loaded program, and then revisit that throughout the year, because we are committed to that Second Step program as our research-based anti-bullying program. And then the past several years, we've brought a speaker in from the district attorney's office to work with us on cyberbullying. The children have been very interested in those programs. They always enjoy hearing the anecdotes about what happens when children sometimes are tricked into sharing information that they shouldn't share online, and how do you choose reputable sites to visit? Because not everything on the internet is reliable and ethical. So we want to work on that and expand what we've already started and build on that foundation that we have. And then, lastly, what we want to do is make sure that our student support staff and classroom teachers have that opportunity to identify best practice strategies for supporting students. We want to make sure that they have opportunities to meet with people who have the same role in our district, and then also perhaps some peer coaching. We've had some peer modeling in our building, some of our ELA writing lessons, so we want to build upon that and expand that, and give teachers opportunities to identify those best practices that are effective and that work to support students, and then provide teachers with the opportunities to implement those in their classrooms. So, we really want to make sure that we're learning from each other. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share the work that we're doing, and if you have any questions or comments, I'd love to hear them. Thank you.
That all sounds good. It's a lot to take in, and it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Joan. Dr. Barnhart, I would like to say that only having two goals, it may seem light, but it isn't light, because it's all-encompassing. The two that you chose are very important ones to make roll around the student besides doing the academics. We do have to worry about the social-emotional learning of these students, and everything that they're getting in society day that they're hearing, a lot different than when I was in school. So, I applaud you for doing those two, but doing really, really good goals is fantastic. It really is.
Thank you. And I have to recognize that the members of the school council at Peaslee spent a lot of time really looking at, you know, what are those high-priority areas for us, and focusing in on those two goals, because as you said, they are big goals, they're lofty goals, there's a lot of work to be done here, but I think we chose well. And for goal number one is, I know as a former teacher, it's how do you provide the time for the teachers for collaboration? Because I don't think, they're with the kids so much, how do we provide the time for the teachers to do that worthwhile work? Okay? They probably do it on their own when they have team planning, or seeing each other in the morning or in the afternoon. But I think it's very important that we provide good quality time, which I think you probably do through your faculty meetings.
And we also have the district's support for the professional learning community meetings. So each grade level does have one period a week when the children are in enrichment activities with the specialists, and the teachers have that opportunity to be able to collaborate, and that's where a lot of the data analysis work is being done.
And I just have two more comments. You can cut me off. And another thing that I really liked, because the first time we saw exemplars was on the DESI website, when MCAS first came out, and they gave exemplars. And when you show those to the students, they're like, "Oh, so that's a one, and that's a two." And pretty soon, they can decide the writing piece, which one is a one, which is a two. They don't have a quantitative thing. It's not like learning your math facts and you get 80%. If you get, you know, 80 correct out of 100, they know that. So I think having those exemplars is, you're taking one step further from DESI, is that you're doing it building-based, which is wonderful to do, so that students can see what is, and what would be an excellence writing piece, and especially, as you said, even point of view. I mean, it's amazing how the point of view goes all the way down to, I think, beginning kindergarten, first grade, you know, like, whoa, point of view? I mean, not to the same degree as a high school student. And my last comment was, is that I'm so thrilled on the flexible grouping, that it's not static, like when we were in schools, and we were the bears and the dogs and the cats, and you stayed there for the whole entire year, you never moved. But I think that's the best way to do that, and I applaud you for doing that flexible grouping. And it's hard, because you have to change. You could be changing daily, okay? You could be changing weekly, something like that. And it also was nice to note that those, going back to my exemplars, is that you have those in place for new students coming in, which is really wonderful, so that they can see the standards that you have at your school, along with all the other elementary schools. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, all by yourself.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other changes being made in the background, we're gonna move on with the agenda. Lieutenant Johnson, did you want to add anything to?
Did the Peaslee comment? Yeah, just that it was a great job. I think last month, we, with Alana's presentation, Principal Sierra Proctor, we did discuss that as our school improvement plan in its current form sunsets, the need to go deeper into each of the core indicators that were addressed in the plan was evident, and that's in fact what Jill has and her team has done with the presentation of the improvement plan. In theoretically, the last two years of the strategic plan, as we have it authored, and has been so for the last seven years, it's nice to know that we have made great strides in meeting a lot of our goals, and now really we're going deeper into some of those goals to another level of understanding and implementation. And I think that's what Jill's plan reflects, that two goals so well-articulated really do demonstrate the comprehensive nature of what these goals represented in the strategic plan to begin with. And so two goals isn't just two goals, these are very, you know, extensive goals, as Joan pointed out. And also, just to the PTO, once again, it's so nice to see how closely the work of the PTO supports the school. As Jill was presenting, Dr. Barnhart was presenting the plan, it's clear that there has been great articulation with the work that the PTO has presented, and that does each and every day. Just the listing, we see it on the calendar, but it's blended in there with all the other schools, and, you know, every square on the district calendar is chock-full of great things. So when you break that out, and you pull it out, and just have an opportunity to look specifically at one individual school, you can see how well it's aligned with the work that's going on in the school, and how much an effort has been made to make sure that there's something there for every grade level, fun and enrichment, and they are one in the same, and also just to touch upon all the curriculum areas. So as you look through your presentation, you see writing, you see math, you see the sciences, and so there's something there for everyone, and just tremendous amount of work, and it's deeply and greatly appreciated.
Our next item on our agenda is an ELA presentation. Welcome, Rhoda Webb, our Director of English Language Education.
An annual presentation with the Director of English Language Education across the district, and so much good work takes place, and it's one of the present, we always look forward to every presentation, but at this time of the year, we can always count on Rhoda coming forward and really giving us better understanding of the changing landscape in our community. We talk often, and at every opportunity, when there's a presentation about changes that are taking place within the district. Rhoda always has a lot of information to share about the progress of all of our students, particularly those students who are joining us who are biliteracy. And also, I think you're gonna bring in, give us an update on the biliteracy certificate tonight, which is very exciting. It's something that the district has undertaken with Rhoda's guidance, and I think we're one of few that are going in this direction, so we're very excited about that.
So thank you for the opportunity to give you an update of our English learners and where we stand. The first graph that you're taking a look at is the growth that our district has had since, I think, we're working here in the district, in this position, since we started. So in looking at the first graph, the dark gray bars will indicate the number of English learners every year in our district, and the light gray bars are the students that are actively reclassified from the program. What is noteworthy, if you look at 2017, at this point in time, when we pulled the data at the beginning of this month, we've had 85 English learners in the program, and 39 students have been reclassified from the program. If you compare it to last year, the light gray bar has increased, and that is because since last year, the department has been increasing, so we have to monitor students for four years after they've been reclassified out of the program, just to make sure that the relationships are good in all areas. So, it is fair to say that we are looking at students that are English language development teachers are actively looking out for. Eighty-five of them were instructed with the amount of hours that are needed to be able to learn the English language, and eighty-five that we're actively monitoring to make sure that they continue to learn from year to year. What is not shown here on the graph is that every year, and we were following the regulations in Massachusetts, is that when a child is exposed to another language, there's nothing, there's always a plus to being exposed to other languages, but we want to ensure that the child has enough English to be able to access the grade-level curriculum. And to do that, we've got a language proficiency screener. We get to know our families very well, and this year, we screened 67 students for language proficiency, and about 40% of the students qualified as English learners, as compared to 31% a year ago when I presented. So as I said, this is not reflected in the graph, but every time, that's about two hours per student that our English language development teachers are getting to know, because we do a very good job in finding out exactly the strengths of each student, and then to be able to work with the classroom teachers if the students qualify as English learners. If we took a look at the second page, to find out the languages that we have in the district, these are the languages of our English learners and the students that we have reclassified from the program. To the left are the languages that we had last year and the total numbers, and compared to this year, we've noticed a slight change. Last year, Spanish seemed to be the prevalent language. This year, it's Portuguese, followed by Spanish, Chinese, and then Arabic, with a total of 27 languages. I believe we have more in the district, but these, I'm only looking at students who are English learners and students who have been reclassified from the program. So this gives us opportunity and wonderful diversity, not only culturally, but as well as linguistically. And if you look at the third graph, the other language proficiency levels of the students. So, we need to determine the language proficiency level, and there are six in Massachusetts following the WIDA standards. Level one, entering, is when a student talks to us with no English, or probably at the word level. So level two is called entering, and level two, sorry, is called emerging. Level three is a long stage, and that's why it's divided into two. We've got low-developing and high-developing, all that is a level three. Level four is expanding, level five, bridging, and level six, reaching. At that point, we have reclassified the students when they have reached that level. That means that their English language proficiency is high enough to be able to function in the classroom independently. On the horizontal line, you see that there's a foundational level and a transitional level. And that means that from level one, not knowing any English, to level low three, which is really at the sentence level, that's a very fragile state, because it's very difficult to access what's going on in the classroom as you're learning English, and have a comprehension probably of about the, at the sentence level. And then at the transitional level, students now have more English, but still, they're needing to learn English as well as access the content that's going on in the classroom. Those are the percentages of where the students are. Of course, this is not static. The students are learning every day, and these languages, these levels go changing. The goal is for a student coming in at the entry level, or whatever level that they start with us, to be able to get to the reaching level, so that we can reclassify them. You see less students at the bridging level this year, because the standards and regulations changed in Massachusetts, in the sense that the reclassification guidelines that we've been given have been lowered, and we're encouraged to reclassify students sooner. We do this very cautiously. We do this by looking at multiple points of data. The access test is one of them. That's a state-mandated test for our English learners, as well as MCAS results. Most importantly, the students work in the classroom, and a consultation between the language development teacher, classroom teacher, very thoughtful, looking at work that the student has done, their writing prompts, before we reclassify our English learner. I mentioned the access test. That is an annual test, and it is a mandated test, so our students are tested twice, both with access and later on with MCAS, of course. They're both mandatory. The access test this year, we are including grade three- this year, we are including grade three for the online format of the test. If you recall, last year we had, I had mentioned that middle class students were going to take the online format of the test. Last year we included all from fifth grade. This year we're including our third graders. Next year it becomes an online version of the test, so it will be grade one to grade eight taking the online modality. And we're ready for that. We're slowly have eased in the different grades to do that. And kindergarten is an independent, face-to-face, developmentally appropriate assessment. All our ELD teachers at this point have been certified. Their training took place last, last Friday. And so we are ready to start that testing season when we come back from our winter break. A very important component to what we do and we place a lot of emphasis is getting to know all our families very well. And we're not just working with our student, we're working with everyone in the family, bringing our families into school. Our families are committed to education. They're here because they want a better future and a better education for their children. We're able to recommend for parents who want to learn more English, adult ESL classes. Our library continues to offer English conversation circles Tuesday evening and Thursday morning and they have resources on their website for families and for English learners. So that is a wonderful community approach. Last year in the spring when we had our International Night and we had over 300 guests come and just get to know each other, talk to one another, and find out our stories and learn more about each other. So it's definitely everyone working together, all the teachers in every building. And from the moment our students begin in our community to the moment that then we reclassify them, this is definitely a collaborative process along the way. The students need to work very hard as they're, as a, so I thank you for the opportunity to share and give you an update.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and for sharing this information with us and for all that you do and all the extra time that you put in, especially for the evening events like the International Night. That I was, I would say that was a, that was a great evening. It was nice. And I know that you, you do encourage, you do encourage the families, not native English speakers families, to come out to these events, not just for International Night, but to the speaker series that we have. I know that you always offer translation services there. I see you at parent nights and open houses and you're out and about in the, in our community and you really help to engage those parents. So thank you for all that you do. Turn it over to my little committee members. Any questions?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it always amazes me of how the changing landscape is and how many languages you have to deal with and different, you know, things on a daily basis and your hard work is definitely appreciated in all the work you do.
Well, I didn't address the seal of bilinguality, which is so encouraging. The seal of bilinguality is a wonderful opportunity to, for English learners who have another language and have acquired English, to be able to graduate from high school with a seal, it is a seal, on their diploma of having proficiency in two languages. But the most encouraging thing about that is for English speakers, learning another language also to be able to graduate with a seal on their diploma. So this is something for the high school level, but this starts, of course, many years before that. And so this is something that we're looking at. It's, it's coming together, bringing all worlds together and our languages together and the importance that that has in our global economy.
Thank you.
Just a couple comments. Not only do we look forward to Rhoda's appearance here in December, but we can also look forward to more legislative changes. And I think the flexibility that the entire English Language Education Department demonstrates is a testament to their commitment to our students. I think there hasn't been a year that's gone by that when Rhoda has presented, they've made some adjustment, whether it's how they're defining achievement and growth or whether it's how they're classifying students. And yet we continue to see our students perform very well, not only on the state assessment as a defined subgroup, but in fact in the classroom. And I think that's a testament to the work that all of our teachers and our administrators do to embrace everyone in our school community. I think that's very important. And again, want to underscore the fact that these, our students also take the assessment, that you, the access assessment as well as the MCAS. And that's quite a challenge for folks who are still trying to become English proficient. So just a wonderful job by all. Rhoda also spearheaded the federal mandate that came down about five years ago now from the Department of Justice, that all of our teachers and administrators were to participate in rethinking equity in teaching English language learning, otherwise known as RETAL. Took me two years to memorize it and then it sunset. But that acronym was something we talked about quite frequently and that was a mandated educational experience that all of our teachers had to go through in order to continue being licensed. It's a certificate on their licensure. And Rhoda spearheaded that and we would like to think that all that time and all that energy that went into moving that initiative, that mandate forward helped to address some of the strides that our kids have made, the EL students have made in the classroom. So just great work by everyone and particularly our ELD teachers and, and Rhoda in her guidance and work.
Thank you.
Joan? I guess the comment I had would be piggybacking on what Christine said because looking at these two and talking about that endorsement course that all the teachers, which is so, so hard and so long and time consuming, but it's worth it. I was wondering, you know, it's, it's hard to quantify, quantitative, but do you think the SCI, is it SCI endorsement? Did that, do you think that that has helped to get some of the ELS to be, FELs to be former? I mean, because now the teachers are more aware of, you know, how they communicate or how they present lessons or, you know, the inferences that aren't there that we were talking about, that, you know, some of those students can have a hard time with inferences or, you know, idioms, understanding those type of things. So do you think having that extra certificate, something that's mandated by the federal government and our state, do you think that that helped to show an increase?
It absolutely did, in the sense that it raised the level of awareness, the collaboration between the classroom teacher, ELD teacher, the children are in the classroom most of the day. So having the right strategies according to the language proficiency is crucial for a child to be able to make progress and to be able to make progress in a faster manner. And it makes a difference with a teacher who applies those strategies and a teacher who doesn't. So it absolutely helped for that reclassification rate. We are able to reclassify many of our students, which is a sign of success.
Thank you for all that you do for the English learners and their families and making welcome into our community. Thank you.
I hope committee members don't mind if we pass over item number three under new business, since our Assistant Superintendent is not here this evening and he really would be the best person to present that information in regards to MCAS results.
Yeah, he actually made the request. He, he presents every year and does a great job and that's one of his areas of expertise among many and has requested that we move that to next month because he's unable to be here.
We can do that and we look forward to hearing from him in the next month's meeting. And report on MAS, MAS C's conference and our representative for the conference is also not here this evening. But you both, both attended? Or you, you attended?
I attended with Assistant Superintendent Martino. It seems like it was about two months ago, but, or almost a year ago, but it was really only a month ago. And I think the highlight of this year's MAS C, MAS S conference was in fact the amount of information that they provided around budgeting and the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So I have provided in the packet some additional information that was distributed. I think chapter 70 PowerPoint was a very informative presentation and document. There's a link that I do, I do believe I shared out with the committee where this is online and available. But it really digs deeply into this mystical, magical formula they call chapter 70 that provides much-needed funding to cities and towns. And it was presented, coincidentally enough, by a former member of our own school district who is the president or executive director on the MAS C board, the School Committee Board, Tracy Novick. And it really does shed some light in, in terms of what it's about and, and its impact on every city and town in Massachusetts. And part of that was understanding more, much conversations that has taken place, I would say, over the last three to four years with respect to the formation of the Foundation Budget Review Committee, Commission. And that was authorized by the legislative, legislative branch to investigate more fully, much-needed improvements to the funding calculation formula, which has not been updated since the Brown 1992, 1993. It's using old cost basis numbers to determine our chapter 70 funding. We certainly know everything has gone up, yet the chapter 70 base numbers have remained stagnant, which means it's not a true reflection of our costs, which means the funding that we receive from the state level back to cities and towns is not truly representative of the costs we are realizing on a day-to-day basis now. And there has, in the packet, there's a snapshot of what the Foundation Budget Review Commission and committees work has identified as areas of much-needed adjustment in terms of cost basis. One is health insurance. We've talked about that over and over again at, you know, corporations are dealing with this and so are public school districts. Special ed, rising special education costs. And then Rhoda presented, as you can see, the incremental costs related to the increasing ELL population across the state, not just in our, our community. And you saw with that mandated hours that are required to provide supports for our students. So again, three very familiar themes to us. We've talked about them when we talk about legislative updates. There is a sample letter in your packet that I would ask the school committee to consider sending off as, have many communities and there's a list of the communities that have, again, come out in support of this commission's work. And I would ask that the committee entertain sending a similar letter. We're going to take this up at all three districts in, in our area to try to give our legislatures some support to move this through the legislative branch for approval. And we have been very proactive in this regard over the years and I would suggest we continue to, to do so because if they adopt these changes, then potentially it will bring about some additional funding, much-needed funding in our communities. So that's something if we, we want to wait until next month to ask the full committee whether they would like to send that, that's fine. I don't think the legislative branch is going to take any action tomorrow or next month, but it is something that having us go on record, record as a community who supports this, I think is, is a good strategy.
Has this been discussed by Southborough or the region?
Yes.
Both?
Region hasn't come up, but Southborough has because region hasn't, region didn't and yes, we did support that. So it will be sent by both Southborough and Algonquin.
Was the vote taken up at, by region?
Yeah, yeah, it was. Yes.
And it was in anonymous?
Yes.
And Southborough as well?
Well, actually, Southborough had thought we had, had sent a similar letter, but it was really in support of the chapter of the charter school issue last year.
Right.
So we're planning to send one in from both districts.
Yeah, I would like to see this come forward again next month.
That's fine.
I'll send a little bit more of a format like that.
I think that is pretty much the letter format that we'll use and we would just put it on our letterhead. So what I can do is prepare the actual letter for signage when we bring it back next month.
Yeah, and can we do it so that we put in like we the, we the people of?
Absolutely. Also with that, each and every year, they provide a legislative update because I know we're always interested in what is moving through the governmental bodies here in the state and what we may want to particularly focus on and what we may particularly want to support. We know that we've heard from our representatives over and over again that few people, many people have comments, few people put that to writing and it only takes a handful of constituents to be able to move something forward in a positive way. And we've been very successful as a school committee and as a combined committee in, in putting pen to paper in the form of support. So here's just a snapshot of the 50 bills that may have something to do with school. Most of them are redundant. There are bills that are coming back year after year after year and some of them are all tied to the same area of focus. So this is just a distribution for information at this point. And then the additional insert in the packet is a legal update on yet again changes to the open meeting law. The only takeaway from this document that I felt was applicable to us is the timelines for, which we're very mindful of, but now they've put, again, they've codified this in terms of timelines around release of minutes and so forth. But I can assure you Cheryl Eppery is well-versed in these changes.
She is. What I found very informative on some of the changes to open meeting law is the statement that our Attorney General has taken a firm stance on anonymous letters. So anonymous letters are not, do not need to be recognized.
Right. So that's the, that's the update. And I know Mr. Kane was our voting delegate on behalf of all three districts this year. So I'm sure he might want to add something and we'll put it back on the agenda for next month.
I was just going to say, I'd love, you know, another reason to sell next month's general, I'd love to, for that.
And we can bring the letter back, back and do that as well.
Thank you. Any other comments on that agenda item before we move on? We'll move into old business. And the first item under old business is the 2018, 2019 school calendar discussion. Is it back as we did discuss certainly at length at our last combine, as we met, the last time we met at the combined.
So I think one of the intent, the intent at the combined meeting was in fact to bring this forward, not just at the combined level, but rather at each of our school community meetings. So Kate Southborough and Algonquin, even though the combined meeting generally coincides with the Algonquin Regional School Committee meeting, to give members of each community an opportunity to come before the committee and share through audience, sharing their comments about the calendar, the proposed calendar. This isn't a new discussion. It seems like for the last six years or so, or more actually, eight years, we've taken this up with great, purposeful intent to engage in an active dialogue. This year we had three surveys, two surveys, one last March and then again in August purposely timed so that we would gather data at both different times during the year. Tremendous response from the parent community, which was greatly appreciated. I think we had 1,300 respondents. We had asked the participants, if you've already responded to one survey, particularly the last one, no need to respond again. We provided an other box, the first survey, which gave us a lot of information, but no specific compelling theme other than a couple things about the number of release days and where professional development days were scheduled in the calendar, which we have spent considerable time focusing on since that information has been shared with us to try to make some purposeful changes. The calendars that are before you tonight is the historical calendar, which we're calling the standard calendar with no proposed changes. A proposed change for next year, which would eliminate the religious observance days and, that are now in our calendar. And then also a survey of 40 school districts. And we didn't limit our questions to just the religious observance days, but also how many PD days districts have and many PD days districts have and what was the average. And then, you know, thoughts about who's doing what for February and April and winter break. So, that information was, was helpful in our conversations. Again, lots of data, and we tried to synthesize it and keep it as simply presented as possible. So, there is a summary of not only the parent responses, but also staff responses to some of the more pertinent issues that folks have been raising, not just this year, but for the last seven years or so when we've had these conversations. So, we will be taking this up again at combined meeting. I would add that we had a purposeful and singular agenda topic at our October combined meeting. It was an additional combined meeting scheduled for the sole purpose of gathering input and engaging in a three district discussion on the combined calendar. It is important because we share transportation that are, and students at K-8 and nine through 12, both districts, to have a similar schedule. Our teachers share in a lot of collaborative experiences with professional development, so that's why we discuss it at the combined in the hopes that we can come to some consensus around the calendar. Each committee votes separately, but generally, or at least in the last 18 years, because it's been almost 20 years ago that we did not share the same calendar. We voted and we were aligned. So, again, that's really why we're bringing it forward tonight.
Your statement, because I frequently bring up the fact that we can vote as.
You can vote separately, yes.
But for all the aforementioned reasons, I encourage my committee members to vote there. I mean, certainly if you wanted to make a motion this evening, you could, but I would, my recommendation is that we wait until combined.
And I would also prefer to wait until we have the full committee. So, hopefully at combined, we really will, because two extra members mean a big difference in a vote, I think that's as important as this.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Okay. Great. Well, then we'll look forward to revisiting at combined.
And combined is December 20.
Do we have a time?
We are trying to minimize the agenda, the number of agenda topics for combined because it seems like while one would think that the December meeting would be the shortest, it tends to be the longest. I think we were there long enough to shut the lights off, and we didn't know how to turn them back on at the high school because we've never been there until 11:30 at a school committee meeting. So, we're minimizing the agenda and we're, I think we're limiting it to about two or three topics so that we can devote a significant amount of time to this very important conversation as well as a few other topics that have been shared amongst the three committees, like start time.
And.
So, I believe it's going to be.
Combined will be first.
6:30.
6:30.
With the hope that we're done by 7:30.
Okay.
Because we'll go right into regional.
Okay.
But it hasn't been set.
Right. We understand that that could be, that is, could be changed, could not, not in stone, but tentatively 6:30 on December 20.
I mean, we'd love to see a 6 o'clock, but getting a quorum at 6 is difficult because people are, you know, still trying to get from wherever they are to where we are.
Thank you. Joan.
What's the best scenario for getting a, a vote from the three districts? When would you like to have the vote if, I mean, let's say, is December the drop meeting date or when is the last time we can take a vote on this? Because I know a lot of people go for the calendar for holidays, teachers for extra care, childcare, things that, so when would be the, the best scenario would probably be December 20th to have a vote? When would be the latest?
So, I think that the general consensus is this is a very important discussion for our community and that ideally we would have the vote if there was consensus in December because, believe it or not, shortly thereafter, people are planning summer programming. And for us on the school level, it means making sure we secure enough staff to be able to run the summer programs that, that we have. The rec department in Northborough has always, already reached out to us and wants the schedule for, you know, facilities, use and access. And I've had calls from parents asking what the calendar is because they're setting their summer schedule. So, one year we did, we did go into March, and it was very difficult to do the scheduling that we needed to do to continue our programming that doesn't end in June. And so, December would be ideal. If necessary, we will have another combined meeting, I believe scheduled in January for the discussion to continue. If we don't schedule another combined meeting, our on-the-book meeting isn't until March, which is definitely too late. So, we would be putting in an additional, scheduling an additional combined meeting for the sole purpose of determining the calendar. I have been asked, I think it was Southborough, it might have been even, even combined that night, to look at another option for a calendar to bring forward. And we've been burning the midnight oil to make sure that happens and having, having lots of conversations with, with the association and with administration to see, you know, how we can address the concerns that have been expressed, eloquently expressed, and also brought forward through the survey. And we are attempting to do that, to bring resolution to the issue.
And then Northborough School Committee members who are not here this evening, I will personally reach out to and stress the importance of attending, you know, attending that meeting on, the combined meeting on the 20th in hopes that we have a, at least, at least if Northborough can have a quorum and start on time.
But to finish Joan's question, and I neglected to give the other side of the story. So, the, the last date can be June. Not very practical at all, and it would be somewhat of a, a real disaster.
I do think the policy.
Policy. Yeah, May. With implementation, yeah.
But I understand that for every other component that's involved with this, like you're saying, the town departments wanting to know, parents wanting for summer programs for their kids, childcare, big one too. So, okay.
I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work that you've put into this, and I really do appreciate your data gathering with the survey and this list of all other school districts and what they do. And I really appreciate all the hard work you've put into this. It's taken a lot of.
This is really fascinating that, since you pointed out this.
Thank you.
Additional information on the unanimous, and when you go down this, the list, I can't, I don't know how many others there are. None recognize other religious. Winter break is unanimous. February is unanimous, except with the one exception of three days.
We, we did reach out. We know why. So, that was a question that was asked, why Auburn? So, when Auburn was building its brand-new high school, for whatever reason, they needed to do this, they changed how the February vacation was scheduled. And it was very similar to what we had proposed two years ago, when we were, when I proposed three calendars so we could be forward-thinking about what we might want to do in subsequent years. And I think they ended up going, their February vacation was Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, because for whatever reason, they, they couldn't be on campus that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday when that new high school was being built, and they loved it. And they, they don't want to go back. So, that's the February modification.
The only exception to February.
Yeah. Of all the schools.
And April is unanimous too. Very interesting.
Yeah, you know, thank you for this. This helps us to make a sincere and a thoughtful decision. It's going to be a hard vote because it's an emotional.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it affects a lot, it affects all our constituents that are out there. So, but we're trying to do something that is also at the best for the students, the faculty, administration, and the kids. So, hopefully this, and thank you for, you know, we didn't take this lightly. You did the surveys. We heard from our constituents, and, you know, they still have a voice at the combined meeting during audience sharing if they wish.
Absolutely.
Or even tonight during audience sharing.
All right. Any other discussion on school calendar? So, update, my request that this be added, we piece, there was discussion, as I think it was brought up at the last Northborough School Committee meeting, and I know at, I know in the past I had been hesitant to add this because I felt it was a combined issue. But we, I think I did bring it out in the open at a combined meeting and asked if we could bring it back to our individual committees. And just to recap, perhaps for people that haven't been following the solar discussion, very excited that we are, discussions are underway, we are moving forward, and I think when we last met, we were discussing solar panels on the roofs of Procter, Lincoln Street and Z, and then carport canopy solar panels in addition to the rooftop at Lincoln Street and Z.
So.
Has that changed?
No. I think we're, what is still true for sure is that it's in the discussion phase and no decisions have been made. And so, what, what we were able to gain, and it was a great meeting, very informative, and we're all learning more about solar. We see the sun, but we don't really know its impact in terms of solar energy. And we last year issued an RFP, a request for proposals from different engineering firms, and had presentations and so forth. We selected Ty &amp; Bond, and Ty &amp; Bond completed its work, which consisted of, consisted of a very detailed report on all of our 10 schools. And they analyzed every 10, all of our 10 schools in our three districts for feasibility and maximization of solar power, if you will. And we did ask them to, originally, we just talked about rooftop, solar arrays, but we did ask them to consider canopies, carport canopies, I guess we know them as such, and they did. And so, what they presented was a lot of information on perceived return on investment. One of the things that wasn't clear to us, because they bundled the two, was if we chose not to do one over the other, what would have been and what will be the return? So, for example, in some buildings, there was a return of, you know, in excess of 200%. But it wasn't a disaggregation of that percentage based on rooftop and canopy. We're exploring all the challenges that come about when you have cars under a solar array and, you know, things that hold them up, which obviously the DPW may not necessarily be too thrilled with, especially in New England when they have to plow around those stanchions. So, we're still in the process of gathering more information from Ty &amp; Bond. I'm pleased to say that our schools did collaborate with the town of Southborough and the town of Northborough, but we are sort of standing on our own now in terms of moving forward. The town is moving at their pace in both communities, and we're ready to, to launch forward with, taking a closer look at which locations make sense. The plan is also for Ty &amp; Bond, as part of the original conversation, to do a presentation to the community before we make any decisions, so we can look forward to that. So, we're a ways away, but we are definitely on the pathway. And we're going to launch Phase Two, which is the second phase of the consulting engineering process soon.
I'm glad you, because I'm very supportive of this, and I'm glad that we are making progress, it's slow, but we are making progress.
We are.
The only other thing I would like to add is that the incentives for, incentives are there, most, big incentives for the car, the canopy.
Right.
Because it's not taking away from open space, and there are some concerns about that. And I know myself, I don't want to take away from any of the open space and the fields that we have and that we enjoy, our school fields. So, those are the, suggested, nothing, nothing is set yet.
Right.
Those are the options, or the, some of the discussions that we've had, we've had in, you know, meetings and combined, so. More, more to come on those initiatives. Any other discussion on the solar? So, next item on the agenda is Master Plan Steering Committee. Our town planner Kathy Jubert reached out to me and asked me to share with you that the, there is a Master Plan Steering Committee, and includes members of the planning board, and they, these committed, this committee will be working to update the town's master plan. And they are looking for a representative from the school committee to be a member of this Master Plan Steering Committee. And I was hoping we might have a volunteer this evening?
Look at me here. Do you want to do? I, I, I can do this.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, will I be replying back to Kathy, or are you, you're on my behalf, let her know?
I'll reply on, on your behalf. Thank you so much. My full gratitude. Very much.
I appreciate it too.
Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on to, before you change your mind. We are quickly going to move on to superintendent's report to the committee. Enrollments.
Enrollments are, actually, the addition to the enrollment packet this month is the NESDEC data that's issued in 2000, for 2017. It usually comes out right in October, but it's always a month late. So, that's what's in your packet. Interestingly enough, I think the most noteworthy item after reviewing the NESDEC information is that their projections for us, despite the number of students that we enrolled unexpectedly in within one month this summer, basically, we were still 14 students below the NESDEC projected high from last year to this year. So, we don't track exactly with NESDEC projections. I always find it amazing that they're spot-on in the October projections because quite frankly, they use our actual numbers. So, they'd have to be spot-on. So, I like to take a look back and say, okay, so what did NESDEC say this time last year for this time this year? And so, when I did that, they were a little bit higher than where we actually are. That is just one of the sources we use to determine projections. Census is another. And then what is the most telling is the actual number of students that are in our system. And then again, you know, whatever transpires with move-ins over the summer. So, I will, I will talk and add to the enrollment discussion. We obviously are in the midst of budget season, or beginning the budget season, so we're looking closely at our enrollment numbers in terms of class sizes, but also in terms of all the other things that are factored into the budget conversations. And it's an important part of the process. NESDEC is just an interesting piece, but doesn't always provide us exact numbers that we need to, to gain better insight into, into what our staffing numbers will be and our enrollment numbers. So, this year, because of a need really to know where our students will be in each of our buildings next year, last year was the first year we sent out a letter to all the parents, the new members of our community who arrived after the budget was set and after our classes were defined. We sent that out in January, I think it was the end of January, and gave them the opportunity to identify whether they wanted to stay in the school that they were placed or return to their neighborhood schools. This year, I'm sending out the letter in the second year of doing this, this month, so that we gain that information sooner in the budget process. And the kindergarten letters, I think, are going out this month as well, soon as I send you the draft tomorrow. So, we're a little bit ahead so that we have better information to inform our budget discussions. And that, you know, is by policy. That's what we've committed to do by policy. So, again, we'll just continue to, to watch all of these sources of information as we have our conversations. Okay?
Thank you.
With that, and speaking of budgets, what we have in the packet is our FY November 18 budget. You will note that there was a significant variance from last month. Created some language about three or four years ago to identify what we've determined as a significant variance. And you will note that we had an unanticipated student, student placements. So, unanticipated student placements at, to the amount of $220,108. And you will see that reflected in the expenditure report at this point. If you look at the bottom line balance, the grand total, we're still tracking in the positive. And so, we'll be watchful over these as well. And I'm pleased to say that Matt Wells is fully entrenched in the budget numbers.
Absolutely.
Getting a. Getting a little used to what three districts mean and three budgets in the budget cycle, but doing a masterful job at it. So, we're thrilled that he's digging very deeply into all of this.
I believe I need a motion to, oh, a question.
Yeah. Christine, seeing that this is, or Matt, seeing that this is an unanticipated cost, are there any counts that had to be frozen?
I've frozen the budget once already.
You did?
Because we wanted to get a better understanding of where, and freeze just means we're putting a temporary hold on purchasing, processing purchase orders. So, the principals submitted purchase orders, and once we understood, you know, a clearer picture of where we are with the budget, we quickly started approving them again. And it's not uncommon for us to just say, okay, let's just double-check where we are financially before we process more purchase orders and expend. So, we've done that, we're very comfortable where we are right now, appreciate the principals' participation and understanding how that all works out. And we've been able to, on the bottom line appropriated amount, absorb this into our budget at this point. But that means other things can't be purchased.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's only so much. And if this was an unbudgeted amount, we have to make adjustments elsewhere.
Any questions?
No, I'd just like to say thank you, Christine, for your financial leadership on this, and, you know, taking the step back for a few, just freeze the budget temporarily, and then look at it, and Matt also. So, thank you very much for your financial leadership.
And I thank the administration for being on the team to do, make this work all out.
The motion to approve with the variance?
So moved.
Second? On favor? Until audited.
The budget goals were reviewed and revised slightly. You'll see the edits from last month. We had some great conversation about some wordsmithing that we wanted to do that was purposeful and what seemed to make sense for the conversations that we were having. And I'm happy to report that, you know, even halfway into the presentations of our school improvement plan, I think Alana and Jill's improvement plans really did reflect some of the conversations we had around the budget goals. So, it's nice to know we're all aligned right down to the budget that supports the work.
Yes. You know, and as I mentioned last month, it is really important that we are providing the additional professional development in the area of social and emotional health. We've heard this evening, and we have heard last month, how important that social emotional learning and strategies are so, they really are so important, and it is important, I think, as us, as a committee, to put money towards that, to invest in that. I've read studies lately that have mentioned that those dollars invested now translate into huge savings when those children grow up and become adults, resulting in reduced crime rates, a reduction in social problems in communities that have implemented these supports. So, I just think it's a great use of our budget dollars, and I'm happy to see that as one of our budget goals. Do committee members have further input on the goals, on our goals?
I would request, if possible, we take a vote because, this evening, because we will be beginning the budget process. And we know these help them at work. I think everyone was here last month and participated in the conversation.
I was.
But you're here tonight, Joan.
I know.
Did you have an opportunity to add changes or make a motion?
I'm trying to think of something, but I don't want to stall the process.
All move that we accept these revised budget goals for FY 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Is that yours? Thank you.
Also in the packet is the budget calendar. There will be a meeting, not yet sent out via doodle, probably between now and the end of this month, to convene the budget subcommittee. We come back.
Operational.
Operational, right, budget subcommittee. We come back after the winter break, and it's our first meeting. And usually, we're having conversations more specifically about the FY 19 budget. So, that will be a date coming your way soon. The one highlight is the December 14th, the Town Administrator's Annual Financial Trend Monitoring Evening Meeting. That's open, of course, by invitation to the community, but certainly by specific invitation to the school committee. And that's scheduled for the 14th of December, which I believe is a Thursday.
Can you send my?
All the principals know, because they probably have a concert or a play or something going on. Every smile went across the face, yeah.
I'll be happy to attend that meeting on behalf of the school committee, if you send my RSVP.
I will. I will be there.
And I think I already responded to, so both of us can be there.
You beat me to that. I haven't said yet, but I should please pretend.
First one.
First one.
Okay.
And I think if the whole committee wanted to attend, they could, right?
It's posted.
It's posted, okay.
Yeah, the town posted.
And that's going to be the library?
Yes.
Yeah, library. Okay, thanks.
Capital improvement.
Budget discussion for FY 19. I don't know if you wanted to, just briefly, we are crunching numbers. We anticipate having a preliminary budget together next week, hopefully for Northborough, so that when we meet, we'll have some good, almost a budget together, that we will be doing more than just talking about numbers, you'll be actually looking at a budget presentation. Again, appreciate the input from the administrative team. This year, at this point, we're really targeting a level service budget. And so, have had many conversations with, not funded, but level service. And so, we've had many conversations with the town administrator, as, again, this time last year, health insurance continues to drive the conversation at the town level, which then drives it down to our schools. Even though health insurance isn't contained in our budget, it's contained in the town budget, and we all share in that. And we've been having many meetings on that, with several more scheduled. And the hope is that we have some resolution on that before we vote for the budgets and go to town meeting this year. Because if we remember last year, we closed all the negotiations and then had to reopen all the contracts in March for the purpose of budget discussions around insurance. So, we're trying to be a little bit ahead of the curve this year.
I understand that that has a lot.
It does.
The town has a lot to do with that, too. So, I appreciate you, all that work on that. Thank you. Any further discussion on budget items? And now, we'll move into, well, no educational policy at this time, however, we do have.
I do want to give an update on the capital improvement.
Oh, yes.
So, still talking to town administrator about our first priority, which is the Z boiler. And we have new cost estimates. That was a request from the town. So, this 350 has moved slightly to around 365, 370. They have that, and I know they are really trying to make this work through their cash, their free cash, to support this without a warrant article. So, we're still on top of that, and still, everybody's mindful of the need. Thank you.
We might hear more of that December 14th.
The 14th?
Maybe. We'll move into policy development and distribution. We have a first read on policy B100. Oh, and my thanks to the policy subcommittee for the work that's being done on our policies. Thank you so much. So, we have a B100. It looks, it looks pretty straightforward. Really no, no major changes. We'll see this come back for a second read next month?
We will.
Okay. Note that, Joan.
I'd just like to thank the administrative staff that helps in doing these policies and taking the good notes when we're there, because they're hearing the communication going back between school committee members. And Ms. Charlotte Bree's taking great notes on these things, she's typing away, and a lot of good discussion. So, I haven't been able to be on the policy, but I was the last one, and it was very enlightening, and it was, it was good work, it really was. So, thank you, Patty. And thank you, Char, I mean, thank you.
Whatever.
Christine.
It's late.
Thanks to the nameplates.
It helps some days, on a long day.
And we're, our recommendation to rescind E200?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, are these items falling under another policy?
They will.
Okay.
They'll be falling under the revised building use policy that we're trying to update, and particularly so because we haven't increased the usage fees for some time, so.
So, do we make a motion to rescind?
We can take a vote.
Yeah, we probably should make a, thank you, Joan, if you have a motion to rescind policy. Well, although I'm hesitant to rescind without having a new policy to have these items covered by.
We can put it on hold until the new policy comes forward, if that's the will of the committee.
It might be.
I don't want to be without a policy that covers school policy.
And then, we have nothing in place.
Right. You know, I agree with that feeling, so.
No problem.
Hold to rescind until the other policy is updated and that one comes forward. So, we have distribution of reviewed and revised policies.
A packet. I don't think I've used the term packet to refer to policies for a while, it was a packet of policies.
It's going to take me a few minutes to update my body.
And they're all online. Just a reminder to the committee and the viewing audience, all of our policies are readily accessible online.
Any further discussion in regards to policy? So, we will move on to, on the way to audience sharing, just as a reminder, this is not a public hearing, but we welcome you to share any items you'd like to share with us.
I don't know protocol, what would you like me to say?
And just, just so you know, the microphone is really just for home use. So, if you speak and you don't, you don't hear amplification, it's really just so the folks at home can hear. But welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. My name is Mitch Cohen. I live on Whittie Street. It's in the Z school. I believe all three members were at the combined meeting, so I will spare you the introduction and some things that I thought would be educational. I really do appreciate the time that you've put into this thus far. I also watched the videos of the lengthy discussions that have taken place since that meeting at the Algonquin, the Northborough-Southborough Committee, as well as the Southborough School Committee. Both had some extended discussions, and I appreciate the level of effort that's required to take this up. And a couple of other thoughts that I think might be worthwhile to think about. One quick, two quick things that are not directly related, I'll bring it up. That fan over there is pretty noisy. So, when you saw a few people sort of rush forward earlier, it wasn't to try to be intimidating or anything like that, we just couldn't hear. So, that might be something you might be able to do something about for future meetings when you have audiences, and I don't know how many you have audiences for. Another, by having the audience segment towards the end, we lost the participation of a couple of great members of the community, including one student that was really anxious to speak on this issue. So, I would encourage, not just for this particular topic when it comes up again, but for other topics, and maybe as a standard agenda, to have that item towards the front of the meeting. I'm happy to discuss that with you, Madam Chair, offline, if you're interested in that. On the question of the calendar, obviously, my interest and the interest of a great number of people involves the religious holiday issue. One item that I wanted to bring up is that there's the term eliminating the religious holidays from the school calendar is one of them. It's obviously not eliminating all of the religious holidays. No one's suggesting, and I'm not suggesting that we get rid of Christmas, I mean, it's a state holiday anyway, you probably couldn't. As silly as that might sound, that's as difficult a situation as it is to those who celebrate Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, as has been mentioned before. Those are really serious holidays. And if you think you'd get an interesting reaction if you proposed eliminating Christmas as a holiday and having school on Christmas, that's kind of what it feels like to us. And that's generating a substantial amount of angst among a lot of people, more so than I could adequately convey, and more so than might be apparent to an outside observer. It's generating a lot of discussion, and it's not good discussion. I know there's hope of resolving this at the December meeting. I hope it is resolved, and obviously, I hope that it's resolved by keeping the religious holidays the way that they are, and that it isn't brought up again. There doesn't seem to be, in all the meetings, I've watched, I believe, every meeting on video where this has been discussed over the past year and a half, I haven't seen any even close to overwhelming benefit of eliminating those holidays. And it sounds like this keeps coming up again and again and again, and I don't even know why. It has to, just drop it. It's generating angst every time this comes up. I know people have gone through it before, this is my first time, because I've just moved to the town. And that's primarily what I wanted to bring up. Another item that might be of interest, I happen to serve on the Library Board of Justies here in town, we promote an event of ours that is related. Next Wednesday, the 13th of December, is the fourth in a series of discussions on religion, and we will have a rabbi, a pastor from a local church, and a local imam there to talk about holidays. I have no idea whether this particular issue will come up in discussion, I would guess probably not. But they're really interesting, and they are related in terms of understanding different religions other than what you've been brought up in and what you are used to. I found them incredibly informative, all three thus far, are on the Northborough cable system, if you want to take a look, and I'd encourage, if you're available. I know there's a Southborough School Committee meeting, so Superintendent Johnson, you certainly wouldn't be available for that, but if the Northborough members are interested, they're held at the town library.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing. And just as a reminder, our, some committee meetings, our policy subcommittee meetings are open, they are open meeting, and they are, and they are posted, and our school committee policy stipulates that our audience sharing comes where it is placed, as it is on our agenda. So, that's not, it's not something that can be lightly changed, but I appreciate.
Clearly, it would be a policy discussion.
Appreciate you.
Policy meetings aren't videotaped, but that's a.
Know that.
Topic for another day. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Abby, welcome.
Abby Alexenberg, on Juniper Brook Road. Thank you so much. This information that you put together about the holidays and the calendar was very informative, and I appreciate it. I do actually also want to address, there was a student here who really didn't want to talk to you about her, the impact that would happen if she were to have to go to school for Jewish holidays, the absence on her report card at the end, the missed work, and a high school student missing the work during school, if she goes to temple, that sort of thing, the impact that has on a student. And that's a high school student. And I know teachers aren't going to be giving exams. I hope teachers aren't going to be giving exams on the days that we have high holidays, but there is work being done, there's learning going on, and they do miss that, and then it's their responsibility to make it up. And it's difficult when you're a high school student, you have extracurricular activities, and she was here to talk a little bit about that, and we're hoping she has an opportunity to come back and talk to you some more, and maybe with some friends. And there's also the young students, where they're obviously not necessarily going to be missing out on learning, but we want them in school, they, I'm sorry, we want them to be celebrating the holidays, and we want to be role models with them, and we want to express the holidays with them, we want to show them at a young age what the holidays mean, and we want them to be in temple with us, not in school. That's, it's, it would be almost a step backwards, as Mitch was trying to say, the angst part, and the question of why, the question is being put forth now, it's a step back, you You know, we have the holidays off now. It's a step backwards. Growing up myself, not having the holidays off as a student, and knowing what that felt like, and having those absences on my report card, it's nice that these students have, you know, don't have to deal with that. So, again, it's a step backwards, and just wanted to put that out there. And again, I appreciate the seriousness you are all giving this and waiting for all the committee people to get together to discuss it. And I hope, I hope we have more people next time to talk about it some more.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that with us. We appreciate you being here with us this evening and for staying through our meeting. Thank you so much, and for participating. I appreciate your sharing. Give our principals the opportunity to share?
Sure. So, we've been very busy this week at Proctor, as I'm sure a lot of the other schools have coding. It's the hour of code, the week of code. So, we have been coding in K through five every day this week. I wanted to thank Eric Gervais and Galen Hammond, who, along with some high school students from Algonquin came down. And we had a coding afternoon after school, and we used the B-bots, and they were on coding websites, and we had robotics in there. And it was just amazing, and they loved it, and they were, I was saying to Dr. Barnhart, they very quickly pick it up, much faster than I can, working alongside them. I think I slowed them down. But it's just been a really fun week for them, and you see students really shine with that. For some of them, that's their passion. So, I just wanted to thank Eric and Galen for that. Our school donated over 700 items to the Worcester Food Pantry as part of our week-long turkey trot back in November. So, we were really excited that we were able to bring those and hopefully make an impact during the holiday season on those in need in the surrounding communities. We are doing a month-long sock and mitten drive to help those that aren't as fortunate with the cold months upon us. We've already had a great showing of items. We're looking to continue that for the next several weeks to make a donation before we go on break. And we will also have our fourth graders will be heading up to Beaumont the week before we go on break, and they're going to spend some time with the residents there, do some activities with them. So, we're very excited because this is the first time for us doing that. So, we're all looking forward to traveling up there to spend some time with them as well.
So, I'll keep my comments brief, because I've already spoken quite a bit this evening. But we are very much looking forward to our hour of code tomorrow after school. Eric Gervais and Galen Hammond are providing this at all four schools. So, it's our turn tomorrow, and I can't wait to see how it goes. Like Alana said, I think the kids pick this up so quickly, and they find it so intuitive. And for us, it's like, what do I do?
Yep.
But they're great at it. We also mentioned earlier that on the 20th of this month, we have the Thinking Ahead Brain Injury Program. So, we're looking forward to learning more about ways that we can prevent concussions and other kinds of brain injuries. And then, grade four will be doing their annual holiday winter seasonal songs around town. And we'll hold their Winter Song Fest on the evening of December 21st. It's always cookies, cocoa, and singing at the Hesley School. So, you are all more than welcome to join us and have some cookies and hot chocolate and sing a few songs with us.
I wanted to highlight tonight that Lincoln Street School is a recipient of a Mass Cultural Council STARS residency grant. STARS, which is new to me, stands for Students and Teachers Working with Artists, Scientists, and Scholars. Will be working under the guidance of a Japanese storyteller named Matoko. I don't even know her last name. She's like Madonna. She just goes by Matoko. Students in grade four will gain multicultural awareness. They'll develop their knowledge of geometry and spatial relationships, and experience the art of origami. The residency supports our school-wide goal of increasing cultural awareness and celebrating cultural diversity. One of the things that we've been focusing on at Lincoln Street School is problem solving, both academically and socially, and this residency will really enhance our work with students. She'll be starting her work. She came to the school today to meet our teachers, and she'll be starting her work with our students in January. Today, the Lincoln Street School, similar to what Alana shared, our fifth-grade chorus walked up to Whitney Place and shared a number of songs with the residents. And this has been part of an ongoing partnership that we've really begun to cultivate with Whitney Place, and we'll plan to continue that.
Thank you.
Well, we're busy, just like everybody else, and Christine is right. We have concerts next week, so it's our concert week with a concert Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So, Monday is our evening of song here. Wednesday is our seventh and eighth grade choral and band concert at Algonquin. And we thank Algonquin for partnering with us and allowing us to use their facility. And then, Thursday is our sixth grade chorus and band concert at Algonquin. So, those are always wonderful evenings to see the kids showcase their talents. And it's always really fascinating to me to hear the sixth graders, because I go into the band rehearsals a lot. And from the end of August until now, there's such growth. And then to hear them again in the spring, and then to hear the eighth graders, it's just, it's amazing. So, that's exciting. We have our basketball season. Our teams have been selected, and we start our games next week, two games next week and two the week after. Our seventh graders travel to the Hanover Theater toward the end of the month to see A Christmas Carol like they do every year. And it corresponds with the reading of a dramatic play version of A Christmas Carol that we've done historically. Our students are also visiting Beaumont to sing, so Beaumont will be getting a lot of company, which is nice. We are also currently collecting money to support six needy Northborough families. We do this every year, this time of year. We partner with Helping Hands, and each of our six teams sort of adopts a family. We obviously don't know the kids that we're buying gifts for, but what we like about this initiative is that we collect the money, and then the students actually go and do the shopping, and then students actually do the wrapping. So, they're invested in that. So, we're buying for 16 young children, and that's always a really exciting thing that we do. Our after-school activities are, everything is busy after school. I always think this time of year, the kids might be too busy to stay for these things, but they're not. Model UN, I looked at our sign-in sheet for the after-school activities yesterday, and, you know, we had a couple of famous people on the sign-in list, Donald Trump and some random people. So, I went up to check out Model UN, but alas, it was an alias. So, anyway, Minecraft, our sewing club is up and running, creative writing, Minecraft. We have a lot of clubs going on. So, it's busy. It's exciting. It's just wonderful to see the kids growing and maturing, and really doing work with other people, so.
Thank you. I would like to share that I attended the speaker series.
If only.
If only, I was going to say the movie If Only. Thank you Superintendent Johnson for not only attending, but being on the panel. It was, it was nice to show our commitment to the open, you know, show our commitment to, and show that we recognize the opioid epidemic, and that we are willing to work with others and, you know, do something about it, and help have a forum for it. So, thank you very much for doing that. It was an informative evening. You touched me, so thank you. That's it for me? Anything else to share?
I think we're, it's hard to believe it's December. When we return, there will be still no snow on the ground.
No snow.
That's right. Anything I don't believe?
Personal report?
Personal report's in your packet. It's a lot different on December than, on December 6th than it does on September 6th, right? We have to do all the summer activities, so.
Future agenda items? You know, we'll bring back the Chapter 70 discussion slash letter. Invitation from M E C.
FY 19 budget?
Yep.
Do we, I think we skipped the school plan for January, right? Did we skip, because we knew there was going to be some budget conversations?
I think we did, yeah.
And we'll bring the past over and cast presentations.
Absolutely.
Any other?
We'll have a few, the policy returns, second read.
Any other items? Approval of bills and papers? Our next, as we already.
Nat has the approval and bills. That's, I think, the first time we've said that. He's a little nervous. Go easy on him.
Any other items to come before the, before the committee's proceeding? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Well, really combined.
Every holiday, everybody.